Looking a little dark in the courthouse where you're at today. I guess the clouds are affecting it somehow.
Yeah, it's a little overcast in here.
I believe we're all here, so we'll turn it over to you to get us started.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. I just want to remind everyone that this is a work session that we're going to have on the new tax system conversion. So we've got a lot of people here that are involved in this very important project. And then at the end, we want to give some time to the our new county treasurer and our new county register of deeds to talk a little bit about their departments. Just a reminder for those that might be attending, this is our work session format on the tax system. If you're here for our regular agenda items, that meeting starts at 5:30. So this, and in this meeting is for informational purposes only. And no action is taken during this conversation. I'm, I would thought I would kick off with some introductions, just so that everybody kind of knows who everyone is. And then I, I think I'm turning it over to Adam. After we kind of do introductions. So to speed this along, I'll call on folks and if you could unmute and just introduce yourself and your role in the tax system process briefly, that would be great. So I'm going to start with Kent Brown.
Hi, my name's Kent. I'm the register of deeds here in Douglas County.
Adam, do you want to go next?
Hi, I'm Adam. I am the county treasurer.
Jamie?
I'm Jamie Shu. I'm the county clerk. You wanted to know how we were part of the tax system, right? So I have a real estate division. The real estate division handles special assessments, splits, combines, tax ownership. So are probably the largest part of this is with tax ownership and splits and combines. And then special assessments as part of that.
Thanks, Jamie. Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Lawson. I'm the IT director for the county. We're very involved in this system, of course. We're mostly responsible for getting all of the environment set up to run the applications. And right now we're up to our necks and trying to get the data conversion done, which is probably the most critical part of any one of these projects is to get all the data moved from one system to the next. It's very complex. So right now it's, it's using quite a bit of our resources to try to get that done.
Thanks, Jim. Steve?
Yes, Steve Miles, Douglas County Appraiser. We're responsible for valuing all taxable property within the county and that's what's used to derive the revenue that the county works off of. We're involved in the tax collection conversion in the sense that we are moving our personal property items all to that that particular system, which should help us in the process of transferring values from our values to, to the tax collection system.
Thanks, Brad.
I'm Brad Eldridge. I oversee the valuation of all the commercial property in the county. And I also work with Steve and other people on our staff on the properties there under the special taxing center programs like tax increment financing and pilots, payment loop of taxes, things like that. And so I'm also on the tax transition committee to make sure that we have all those special issues addressed as we go into the new system and navigating those.
Kami?
I'm Kami Owens, Douglas County Budget Manager. I do the mill levies and the tax units in the tax system. I'm also involved pretty heavily in the special assessments, tips, NRAs and real estate records from my previous work with the county clerk's office.
Candace?
Hello, I'm Candace Norman. I'm the Douglas County Project Manager for the Tyler Tax System Implementation. So I'm strongly focused on getting this system going in time for our go live in August and making sure all the things that need to happen as far as training, conversion, processes, any types of meetings that need to happen. Communication between Tyler and Douglas County employees gets lined out. So just working as hard as we can.
Marnie, and I, I don't know if you had intended to be a part of the presentation or not, but if you want to introduce yourself, you can.
Hi, I'm Marnie. I'm the chief deputy county clerk. I didn't intend to be a part of the presentation, but I'm on the team. I don't do as much as the other folks. I do state assess and values with Kami. A little bit of everything with everyone else.
Thanks, Marnie. And it looks like I scared Jessica off. I didn't know if she was supposed to be a part of the presentation or not, so she could, I'll leave her over in the attendee list. So, you know, I want to say before I turn this over to Adam to talk a little bit about the system. You know, I don't, I don't think most people understand how important this system is to everything we do here and how fundamental it is to the, the core base functions of county government, which are land records and taxation. And so this is a huge project. It touches all of these departments, as you can see. And so this project's been a long time in the making and I'm really proud of this team for working together so thoroughly and thoughtfully to make sure that we are ready for this important transition. With that, I think I'm turning it over to Adam, who's gonna say if you kind of kick off the conversation about the tax system.
Yeah, so Adam Rains, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
So you saw introductions from all of the steering committee, so Jim Lawson, Steve Miles, Jamie Shu, Kami Owens and myself, they're all, excuse me, part of the steering committee. So any major problems that arise, you know, we'll all meet and talk about the issue going on. Candace, again, is the project manager. She is from the treasurer's office. So, you know, this has been her full-time job since January of 2020. So we're 16 months into the project. We still got oh, probably another six months or more to go. You know, this will last till, till well after January of 2022. So this is a long project. It takes a lot of departments and a lot of work. So give you a little background on why Tyler Tax. This is from the commissioner meeting on November of 2019 from Jim Lawson that he wrote. So it's very good background, so I kind of wanted to borrow it. So if you've heard this again, or have heard this before, I apologize, but it's really good. It gives good background. So in 2008, we implemented Manitron, a GR computer system with Sedgwick County. That was to replace an old aging mainframe property tax system. Excuse me, Manitron was purchased by another company. And then they were purchased again by their current owner, which is Thomas Reuters. Over the years, we've been promised new releases of the product enhancements, but that has never came to fruition. They were, Manitron is with a number of other Kansas counties, but it has slowly been losing them over time. And right now it's back to just Sedgwick County. We started with version 8.6.10, and that's the same version we use today. So we've had that since 2008. And we're still on the same version. So a lot of upgrades that we're not a part of, that we should be. Manitron is bigger in other states, but in Kansas, it's just not working out. Tax systems are different than most, most other systems because each state on, each state has their own property tax laws. And a system needs to be programmed specifically for that purpose. So Douglas County uses our property tax system to levy real estate property, personal property, state assessed, special taxes. Use it to produce bills, collect taxes and distribute those taxes out to the proper authorities. It's also used to provide the public with values and tax data information. So I'm an individual can go online and pay their taxes to see their tax receipts, see their values and other information about their property. In addition to, you know, just the data involved that integrates with various systems that the county has. So one solution and FIS, which is what we use to collect credit cards on for customers to pay online. So the contract was approved by county commissioners in January of 2020. And since then, we've been working very hard to, to keep this going. The state system, I guess more information on, on Tyler Tax and why Tyler Tax. The state uses Orion, which is part of a Tyler Tax system for mass appraisal. So the appraiser's office has actually been using part of an Orion system since 2007, 2008. The state has mandated that across all counties. So since 2011, everyone in the state of Kansas, every appraiser in the state of Kansas has already been using a form of Tyler Tax called Orion. So this is kind of a kickoff to why we chose Tyler Tax or why the committee chose Tyler Tax. You know, there were hiccups with the implementation of Orion, but Steve has mentioned that Tyler Tech was always responsive and worked to correct issues as they come up within a short period of time. So by adopting Tyler Tax billing and personal property modules, we anticipate a smoother transition between the valuation and the tax bill and then collection functions. It also should reduce the amplifications of any errors caused by reentry, reentry of those values by conversion issues from momentum. So right now, what the appraiser's office does with values, they enter it into Orion. And they also enter it into our current system of momentum because that's how we're going to collect the, at, at the end, we're going to collect the money in on momentum. So moving towards Tyler Tax will actually alleviate some of the double entry by the appraiser's office on the real estate personal property, or on the real estate property. So we're hoping that that reduces some overall workload on the appraiser's office. We talked about the departments it does affect. You know, they're kind of all here, the clerk's office, the appraiser's office, IT, the treasurer's office and administration. We talked about Candace and being the project manager for that. This has been her full-time job. So, you know, my hat off to her. She's done a great job on that. I mentioned she is from the treasurer's office, so we've been running basically short a clerk this entire time. So a lot of work that Candace has put in and a lot of work that the other staff in the treasurer's office have picked up. So one big topic is cost. What is this cost? You know, right now we're estimating it's going to cost $967,000. So far, we have paid about 619, and that's April 30th. We had some tax system reserve fund that we used. About 800,000 of that comes from that tax system reserve fund. And then the treasurer and the clerk had an IT fund. And they both pitched in $100,000 for that. So we're right at a million with that. So we have enough to go ahead and pay that. That also gives us room to, if we want any enhancements or any programming or reports that we have to go ahead and pay for, gives us some, some space for that. So I'll go ahead and talk about the timeline, what, what it's looked like over the past 16 months and what it's going to look like in the future for for the county and the Tyler Tax project. We began by we, I mean, the committee in Douglas County began this project back in early 2019. So another reason why we chose Tyler Tax or Tyler Technologies is because Johnson County currently has it. They've been using it since 2018. So we went over in, the committee went over in, I believe, 2019 to look at it to see how it worked, to see if it was something that we would benefit from. Obviously it was, and that contract was approved by the county commissioners in January of 2020. So, spring of 2020, you know, we're spending a lot of time kind of creating processes, making sure that Tyler Tax processes will work for what we currently have. Candace is setting up weekly and bi-weekly meetings with Tyler Tax and also with each department. Each department has a a committee that meets frequently to go over issues that they're having or system-related processes they'd like to see. So, you know, we had personal property gap meeting. So what the gap meeting was is to, for Tyler Tax to show us what they currently do. And then we come in and say, well, we're also going to need whatever else. And it kind of creates that, that gap, or we're closing that gap in from what they offer and what we want them to offer as far as processes, are there state statutes that we have to follow that, that they're not showing us that we have to do. So it's kind of closing that gap to make sure the end product is going to be what we want it to be. So, moving on to summer of 2020, we're, again, we're still aligning those processes and technologies, still meeting with each department. We were creating, I guess in, in the spring of that year, we were creating new tax bills. So this year, our tax bills will look different than they have in the past. So there will be some education for taxpayers this year about what your bill looks like. There'll also be a new online public access site where they can go in and pay. They can print receipts. They can look at their values. So it'll be a little bit more than what we currently offer. And they'll also be able to pay bills through that public access site. I do have new bills if you do want to see them of kind of what they would look like. They're very similar to Johnson County's. I think me and Sarah talked about sharing my screen. I don't know if we want to go ahead and do that real quick.
I think that sounds great, Adam, if you just want to pop them up.
Yeah. Did everyone see that? Cool. So this would be a real estate tax bill. You kind of see it is colored. So you see the green on there, which I think provides some benefits, just kind of highlights the areas here. This is a fake bill. I think this is actually from, from Johnson County, but it's very, very similar to what we have. This is a, something we've submitted to Tyler Tax to go ahead and move forward with. So this is a real estate tax bill. You'll see a state assessed tax bill. Looks a little bit different. It changes the color to blue. And then you'll see the personal property is an orange-ish yellow. So they all looked a little bit different, but they all have the information that we need. You know, see down here on the bottom, how much they need to pay, which to me, I think this sticks out a little bit more than our current bills, which are all just, you know, black print on white paper. So look a little bit different. So I hope that they provide a benefit to, to taxpayers. So that was most of 2020, I'm sorry, in the fall of 2020, we also worked on prepping data. And by we, I mean the IT department. I think they did a lot, a lot of work with prepping data for conversions. Ideally, we're going to go through three rounds of conversions for personal property and for collections. So six conversions altogether. We sent our first conversion of personal property in February of 2021. That was completed and delivered in March. We sent our second round of conversion for personal property. That was delivered in April. So that one, I believe, caused IT some issues. But, you know, they, they worked hard. They had to create, from what I understand, build a new server so that they could, they could be temporarily delivered. I have no idea what that means, but if you have questions, Jim would, I'm sure, love to explain what that process was. And it sounded like a lot of work. So, you know, definitely hats off to, to Jim and his team for making sure that got, got done right. Spring 2021, so we have sent one round of collections, one round of data for collections. We hope to get to three. We might only get to two, but we're hopeful for three. We have not got that one back yet. So once we get the first round back, we can then send a second round. The more conversions we have, the cleaner the data looks at the end. So if we only do one, we might have issues down the line of data's not coming in right. We do all three. Hopefully it catches all those issues, but just kind of what that looks like. Summer 2021, we head into training for staff. We came, we got a schedule here recently of what training will begin to look like. For, that'll start in June. So June 7th is our first training date. We will basically work with training from starting the tax system, so entering levies all the way through conversion. Or I'm sorry, through distribution. So we'll kind of go through that process to make sure every little thing works. We will do tests, collections, they'll do role changes, they'll do address changes, all that stuff, to make sure everything is working before we go live. Which is potentially August. So we're right around the corner for that. And then in August, it doesn't. We're still, we're still working. So Jamie can probably speak more to this, but I believe when they went live with Manitron back in 2008, they decided to do double entry. Something happened where things didn't go as planned, and because of the double entry, they caught an issue that kind of saved us. So that's the plan for this is to double entry for all staff. How far we go, we're not for sure yet, but definitely we'll do it through August, or August, most likely through December. We may push that into January, but we want to get through at least that major collection time period. So for the clerks, that means double entry on address changes, special assessments for the appraisers. That means values and rule corrections. For the treasures, that means running tax bills and post payments. And for administration, it means levy. So we're not only doing the work, but we're going to be doing it twice. So a lot of work going forward after August. So we're ready for it. I think we're all ready for the go-live, but it'll be a lot of work. But we're definitely excited for what Tyler has to offer and the system that we'll be getting out of it. So any questions? I know that has a lot of information, so I apologize, but there it is.
This is Commissioner Portillo. Absolutely no apologies necessary. It's nice to hear about the updates and what the next steps are. I don't have any questions at this point.
Commissioner Reed, thanks, Adam. That was very thorough. I was curious about the, you mentioned sort of some more features and accessibility for taxpayers. And wondering if we should expect that, well, curious if you can elaborate on that and kind of a few, and maybe you said it, but a few examples of what folks will be able to do online and if that should be available both on mobile devices and computers, because I just am curious if we know what that, that software looks like.
So I think one of the biggest features, what we'll have with our new public access site is the ability to print receipts. Previous or currently what we have, it just shows the tax amount paid. It's not an official receipt. So a lot of times we'll get taxpayers who go on there, excuse me, want the receipt, but it doesn't show a receipt. So I think that'll be a big benefit for taxpayers is be able to actually print a receipt off and take that for whatever they need it for. Most likely it's tax income purposes, but that'll be a big benefit. To my knowledge, and maybe Jim can speak more to this, it will be available for mobile devices.
I'll put my two cents in here, Adam. But it, it should be that, that it's a new public access website that, that uses responsive design. So it should work well on mobile devices or workstations or laptops. That's the goal. And kind of what it does differently than what we're doing now is it has more information in one place for the citizens, taxpayers. Because not only can you go in, you, you can go into this public access system, you can look up your property. You can look at your values. You can look at your taxes. You can pay your taxes. And you can also now view some of the ECAMA appraisal information about your property. And you can print out a, it's a, what is it? It's, it's a property record card. I think that has a lot of detailed information. So this new public access will have that all in one place. Currently, you have to go to a couple of different places, like two or three different places to pull that together. So there should be benefits for our citizens, be able to find all that information in one place, be able to pay their taxes, look at their values, look at their appraised, and you know, look at their property characteristics. So we're, we're hoping that's going to be a good benefit to the citizens.
That's great. Thanks for giving some more detail. I don't have any other questions.
Appreciate the overview. I, you know, earlier this year, we learned about some new legislation that came out around tax bills and what we're going to have to send out. Have you, does this help? Is it a bad timing? I'm just interested in this group's response to what we'll now have to send out to our taxpayers as sort of an estimate of what we think those taxes are.
Are you, are you talking about that Senate Bill 13? Spirit, do you know if that's what it is?
Yes.
We're actually, if, that's a little bit different. We're actually working right now, the IT staff is, we're working on a way for all the taxing authorities in Douglas County to be able to come in and use a web form. And they can see their value information, and it has their information from last year, including their mill levy. So they'll be able to go into that form and say, yes, we're going to exceed our tax revenue neutral value. And so if they say yes, they will put in their new mill levy rate. It will calculate out what that tax value is. They will have a place to put their hearing date, their hearing time and hearing location. So we can collect all that information for that process for Senate Bill 13. What happens after that, I have to turn it over to Kami. I'm only, I'm only involved in like creating something where they can enter the information. All the taxing authorities are going to be required to do this year.
And I'm actually going to hand it off to Jamie pretty quickly here. I am responsible for doing that actual work for the revenue neutral rate. But Jamie is in charge of the mailer that's going to go out and what's going to be able to merge and what's not. So Jamie can add his information.
Well, one of the good things about Senate Bill 13 is we don't have to mail the notices this year. So this year, we have to go through the steps of revenue neutral and having the hearings, but the notifications will not be until next year. And so we've already started having some conversations with Tyler and, you know, the goal is, is that we'll be able to work with the vendor to kind of automate those notices. You know, one of the things that we have talked about is we don't want those notices to look like a tax bill, because we don't want to confuse taxpayers. That's our concern. So it will probably be a completely redesigned kind of notice, but it would come out of the same system. But we've got a year to figure that out. And, and that's if we, you know, we're pretty confident we'll go live in August. One of the things that's difficult with the tax system is there's about three little windows that we can go live. All of us deal with different calendars. And so with the tax system, we have very limited go-live dates. So we keep our fingers crossed that we hit August, because if not, it'll put us back a little bit. But so we have a year to figure that out, Patrick.
Thanks for that. And I, I'm glad to hear that we think we can use Tyler as well for that system. Have we are we preparing for any additional costs with that? Or, and I may be way ahead of those conversations. And so I just, I, I know we, we had the funds sort of saved up for quite some time to move to this new system. I just don't know what's the next big cost coming our way when it comes to tax software.
So the way that law is written is the first two years, the notices are to be paid for by the state. But I will tell you that the state has yet to appropriate the funds for that. So I think we're operating under the assumption that that may not happen. Then after those two years, then all the entities that have to be part of that notice, we have a formula where we separate the cost among those entities based off of kind of their share of the, the tax bill. So if the law works and is appropriated, then the first two years, the state is supposed to cover the cost for those notices. But the notices are significant. I can tell you that a mass mailing like that is not cheap. But there's a system in place to kind of share that cost.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The one thing is, in, Jim knows probably more about this. Anytime, we'll work with Johnson, but anytime you have kind of a special project that gets added to it, there is usually a cost to build those, those add-ons.
And, and Jamie, hopefully, you know, when we budgeted for this project, we save money and we put it away, put it in reserve fund. We, we have some extra money to pay for things like this. If it, if it's going to be an addition, additional cost, you know, we do have some funds that should be available for that. And if it's something that is required by statute, you know, I think that's part of our contract, Jamie, is, you know, the, the Tyler Tax, they, part of the contract is this, when statute You know, the the Tyler tax, they part of the contract is this, when statutes are changed. That they have to make the changes to our system. That's that's just part of, we pay annual maintenance fee and support. And that's part of that cost.
Thank you. That's great to hear and great to hear. We're thinking ahead. Thank you.
If there are no other questions on the tax system, I did want to give an opportunity for Kent and Adam to talk a little bit about their departments. I know. Uh, Jamie's going to come back at a later time and have give you guys some updates on elections. So. And you all heard from Steve earlier this year. Uh, I guess at this point, I'll I thought maybe I'll turn it over to Kent to start since Adam's done a lot of talking so far. And Kent can can kind of give his update and see if there's any questions from commissioners about the register of deeds. So go ahead, Kent.
All right. I would like to share my screen if I could, please.
You should be able to. Let me see if I can do more, but. It it's telling me that all panelists can share. Jill, do you know if there's something I'm missing there? If if there's.
I don't think so. Um. To share screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be, because Adam was doing it a minute ago. I'm not sure. Um. What'd you do, Kent?
I don't know.
Is it down there? Yeah, did yeah. So what notice is it giving you?
It says all pa- it's just, it says um, all panelists can share. Um. Kent, why don't I just try making you a co-host and then we'll see what happens?
Here we go. I got it. Hang on.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
I think.
Okay.
Maybe.
I don't know. Uh, hopefully you could just, you know, hover over the bottom where it shows share screen and. Pop that arrow open and select your screen. I I just kind of ran through the process and I think it was going to let me do it. I didn't go ahead and finish it.
No, I got it now. Okay, sorry about that. Track this out of my way. Okay. So my name is Kent Brown and I'm the Register of Deeds here in Douglas County. Uh, my deputy is Sherry Hicks. And I prepared a very brief departmental overview to show you our structure, purpose and some of our goals. We are a fairly small department. In addition to the register and the deputy, we have five recording clerks. Our office is set up so that each of us can assist with daily workflow, but the deputy and the register have specific additional duties. Each of us knows how to record documents and assist customers. Uh, but the deputy also oversees. Daily operations as a sort of floor manager and ensures that the daily workflow runs smoothly. She also supports departmental initiatives by assisting me with projects such as participating in vendor client service meetings. And assisting with preparation for an upcoming data entry project, among other things. I set strategic goals for the office and decide how best to allocate our personnel and financial resources. I also handle our deposits, office policies, contracts and other administrative tasks. So the core of what we do can be broken down into two main categories. Obviously, our main responsibility is to record documents. That's why we exist. Most of our documents are related to real estate like uh deeds, plats and liens. But we do also record military discharges as a free service for veterans. That's about the only thing that we do that's not real estate related. We also have a fair chunk of customer service in our office. Like most other departments, we have emails and phone calls. We also get a fair amount of walking customers, but something that might be a little unique to us is the researchers that come in and access our records. Uh, we have genealogists, title researchers, a lot of people using our records vault. They might be back there for several hours. They're doing more in-depth work with our records than the average citizen who comes in and asks a question about their house or their deed. We are one of the departments that generates revenue for the county. Um, our revenues have changed somewhat since the mortgage tax was eliminated in twenty eighteen. And the recording fees were consequently adjusted. So I've only provided financials from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Anything prior to that is really comparing apples and oranges. Uh, the this total on the screen includes all countywide funds, tech funds, heritage trust fund revenues. That's everything that we've brought in total. So now our revenues are largely based on page count. So to get a more across the board comparison. Uh, to see any kind of discernible pattern, you'd want to look at trends in the document count. That's why I provided a graph of all of our recorded documents for the last decade. And you can see that twenty twenty was a very good year for the quantity of documents that we recorded. And that did translate to our revenues. Um, since our revenues are tied to document and page count. This graph will give you a better idea of the sort of revenues we can expect in the near future. Now, so far, twenty twenty-one is looking to be another record year. We're already up forty percent over last year. Which was a record year. Before I talk about where we're going and the direction of the department's future, I do think it's important to acknowledge where we've been and how far we've already come. We started uh electronic recording or e-recording in two thousand eleven. By twenty nineteen, ninety percent of our documents were being submitted electronically. In twenty twenty, with the pandemic, that crept up to ninety-two percent. So far for twenty twenty-one, we're around eighty-eight percent electronic documents. This is safer, faster and more efficient, and it has transformed the structure of the office and our daily workflow. Digitizing is another thing where we've made a lot of strides. Um. Our land index cards, I meant to have one with me and I don't. They're they're. Records of everything that happens on a particular parcel. And our researchers use those a lot. They were scanned in in twenty eleven and made available online. And then in twenty nineteen, I oversaw another project to digitize over one hundred and ninety-six thousand miscellaneous records. That were not previously backed up. So we have a book of fences from the eighteen seventies. It is falling apart. And we have backed that up online now. Uh, we also have a book of chiropractors from the eighteen hundreds oddly, um, a lot of random records that are backed up. So. I don't know. They're there now if anyone wants them. We also got new recording software in twenty sixteen and that reduced the workflow of recording a document from two to three days. Down to just a few minutes, like two to three minutes. So that's very exciting for us. And this software also introduced e-commerce. You can purchase any document online with a credit card. Last year, this brought in about seven thousand dollars. At fifty cents a copy, that's thirty-five hundred copies that my staff didn't have to make. That's maybe a thousand phone calls we didn't have to answer, a thousand emails we didn't have to send. So that's exciting for us. Um, the accessibility. The accessibility of free web access actually played a big role in the e-commerce and vice versa, but. Anyone, anywhere, anytime can access nearly any document for free and purchase a copy if they need. That was not available prior to twenty sixteen. So we also worked internally with the IT department to create a file directory to host over two hundred and nineteen thousand miscellaneous files. In an independent directory, uh, until we can figure out a way to integrate those into our main software. And that's linked to it online. You can access all those online for free. These are mostly non-recorded documents like our index offenses from eighteen seventy-one. Because we've got a strong platform in place to record documents and assist customers. We're moving into a phase in which we really get to focus on polishing and promoting our services. So our software has a fraud alert capability in which people may opt in to be notified when a document is recorded with their name. This is a feature for which numerous people have asked. Uh, we've been testing it for months now. But unfortunately, technical difficulties have prevented us going live with it so far. Data entry, uh, data entry. That's a monumental project that plagues recorders and archivists everywhere. So Douglas County has approximately two hundred forty-six thousand unind- unindexed documents. In our primary collection of recorded records. We are finalizing a contract with our software vendor to conduct data entry on fifty thousand deeds. Ranging from the nineteen eighties back to the eighteen eighties. And that will be a huge help to people searching our records. Right now, the images are out there, but there's no data entry. You can't type any keyword and find it. So we've also set ambitious data entry goals for our own staff to help us achieve some meaningful progress in a reasonable timeframe. We crunched the numbers and figured out what we needed to do to to make some progress on that. Military discharge recordings. As I mentioned earlier, we record military discharges. And in twenty nineteen, Douglas County recorded just seven military discharge records. In twenty twenty, only three. So far in twenty twenty-one, not a single veteran has recorded their military discharge with Douglas County. We've got to do more to reach the veterans in our community. So we're exploring partnerships with local organizations like the KU Military Affiliated Student Center. The VA Clinics, the VFW, whoever we can find, just to see what kind of marketing or incentive options might be available. We're also exploring ways to make it more accessible, perhaps mobile recording stations at special events or scheduled times. This is a new initiative and it's in its most preliminary stages, so I don't really know what possibilities it holds yet, but I do think it's important to explore that. I know Sarah loves our technology fund, so I thought I'd talk about that a little bit. Um, the statute is there on the screen. Basically, for every document that we record, we get a few dollars that goes into technology fund. There's one for the register of deeds. The clerk's office, the treasurer's office, and we've used it to buy things like the wide format printer there in the photo. Touchscreen monitors, we are using it to pay for the data entry services on those fifty thousand deeds. Uh, we used it to pay for digitization when we did that hundred ninety-six thousand in twenty nineteen. And we can use it for software enhancements. So honestly, most of our strategic challenges are of a technical nature. For many of those items, our tech fund can help address our needs. Fraud alert requires technical support from our software company and our tech fund pays for that annual support. Data entry service contracts. Tech fund pays for the external service contracts. Raising awareness and creating convenience for the military discharge recordings might require. Mobile recording stations or innovative electronic submission portals. Again, tech fund can pay for any hardware or software that we may need on that. Uh, our countywide needs for the countywide fund are basically limited to salaries and office supplies. Because this technology fund allows us to draw from our own reserves for most of our significant needs. So that's a quick rundown on our structure, responsibilities, revenues, future initiatives and funding. That's basically all I had for you all today. Is there anything else you would like to know?
This is Commissioner Reed here. Um, I'm curious to know more about the um, military discharge. Since since you mentioned that that's a future goal and can you help me understand?
Yeah.
What that means exactly? Why why would somebody record that? Um, and what kind of details are recorded and what benefits are there to that either for for veterans or for? I I mean, I I think I can imagine that um, those records would be available to researchers, so there's that benefit. But for someone that you want to encourage to do it, um, how come?
The military discharge records are actually completely confidential. They are not publicly available. And that's by state statute. It gives them convenient and fast access in case the originals misplaced or lost. A lot of people assume they're never going to lose it when they. Leave the military at thirty-two and then now they're seventy-two and they can't find it. Um, it's a safe and secure place to store it. We can make certified copies in a matter of moments. Uh, it's easily accessible if you're applying for veteran plates downstairs in the treasurer's office or really any kind of benefit. It's it's here, it's in a safe, secure location. It's okay if you lose your original, get all the certified copies you want. It's it's not necessary, but it is a free service uh to the veterans. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I was previously unaware that that was a thing before five minutes ago.
People are, that's the problem.
And this is Sarah. I believe that information is vital if you're trying to receive certain benefits and death benefits related to military service and insurance. So it can be a real uh help for families too in in some situations.
This is Commissioner Portillo. It does sound like that's a space where we could do a lot more outreach. So Kent, I appreciated hearing all the organizations that you're considering. Reaching out to um at KU and I believe that Haskell also has a veterans group, so it would be good to make sure that we reach out to. Haskell and I'm, I would assume that Baker University might have the same. So thinking about all three of our higher ed institutions.
Thank you for that.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Kent. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Adam, do you have a few things you want to review quickly?
Uh, I think I have a couple.
Okay.
Um, Kent, uh, by the way, we we could probably have a conversation about how we can uh encourage our customers to go upstairs and file that. I'm not sure if that customer has to do it or if we could send you the documents and you do it on that path, but I think that's a discussion we can have. To incentivize customers to do that. So. Um, so I I had two documents that was submitted to you all. So um, let's start with the. The tax side. So um, the treasurer's office, I would say, is unique, right? We all think our our offices are unique. So. Um, so the treasurer's office kind of has two sides of it. One is a what we call the tax side. Um, they handle billing property tax, kind of what we just discussed, um, property taxes, real estate taxes, collecting those taxes. And then we have a motor vehicle department. Um, motor vehicle department is a state function. So we're actually doing it as agents of the state. So. Um, our programs that we run are all state. Um, there for a while, our computers were paid by the state, printers were paid by the state. Um, scanners, all that stuff was paid by the state. Um, they've changed that in the past couple of years, so now we're paying for it. Um, but all of our decal paper. Um, so when you get your little sticker with the year on it, that's all paid by the state um currently. So. A lot of the functions are still funded, or not functions, a lot of the supplies are still funded by the state to bring tags, uh, things like that. So. Um, it is, it is odd when we kind of think about the treasurer's office, one is tax, one is motor vehicle. Um, so if we start with tax, um. The tax side, what we call it, we have um four clerks. So we have. Uh, three uh processing clerks and then we have a director of taxation and accounting, the deputy and then myself. Um, so the three clerks, including Candace, um, who is now on the Tyler Tax Project. But um normally we have three clerks back here processing transactions. You know, they're responsible for the billing, collecting. Um, distributing the taxes out to those those entities which we've we've talked about. Um, in the past, um, they're also responsible for balancing and tracking operating banking accounts. Um, you know, the the big thing I I think with the tax side, they're kind of the direct contact for customers. So when they have questions about their taxes, whether it's about their valuation, about the address or anything like that, they usually come to us. Um, they they call us, you know, when they're coming in to pay the bills, they're talking about, um, well, why is my value like this? Well, we don't necessarily have anything to do with your value. Um, you wouldn't even talk to the appraiser's office. So we let them know they need to go downstairs to. To talk to to Steve about their valuation. Um, so it it is kind of sometimes we're we're that frontline of receiving a lot of those phone calls or or customers in person. Um, when we talk about um billing, um, so I pulled some numbers from twenty. Twenty twenty, um, I guess I go ahead. I don't know if I have those documents. So I guess does everyone have what was sent? Okay, good. So if we're looking at the uh, the treasure or the tax side, um, we can see the the total amount of tax bills sent. So in twenty twenty, we sent a total of four thousand, I'm sorry, forty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-nine tax bills. Um, so we print, we have a service lineage who prints, folds and mails all of those. Um, real estate, you can see we're right at forty thousand, watercraft, twenty-five hundred. And you kind of see the line items there of how many bills we we actually process and send. So eventually all those bills will come back. Um, because we like that customers pay their 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 tax bills, right? So um. When those come back, we're looking at. The revenue. So uh, real estate will bring in roughly a hundred eighty-six million dollars in revenue. Um, altogether, we're looking at two hundred and five million dollars. That we bring in, not necessarily revenue for us, because what we're going to do is we're going to then distribute that money back out to those entities. So. All the money we collect isn't necessarily ours. Um, you know, we collect on the behalf of the city of Lawrence, on behalf of Baldwin, fire districts. districts, libraries, universities, we collect on, on their behalf, and then we distribute that, distribute that money back out to them. Um, so we have five distribution dates. We have January, March, June, September, October, and December. Well, we got rid of December one, but last year we did have, have the December one. So, last year, we distributed about two hundred and twelve million dollars. Um, so, the biggest one for us is January. Um, that's after the December tenth tax collection, or I'm sorry, December twentieth tax collection. Um, so that's gonna be our biggest distribution, because we're collecting the most money on that first half tax payment. Um, our second half tax bills are due, um, May tenth, and then so you'll see the June is our second largest, um, distribution date of seventy-eight million dollars. Outside of, um, collection of taxes, we also, um, do the county deposits. Um, we also manage the banking and reconciliation of, of checks. We write refund checks for, uh, motor vehicle. Um, so a lot of work is involved. Um, of course, losing Candace for the past couple of months, um, you know, has an effect. Um, you know, we, we're picking up extra duties. Uh, Jessica, our deputy, has been picking up extra duties. So, um, it's been, it's been good, but it's also been a lot of work. So, we'll move over to the, um, to the motor vehicle side of things. Um, again, that is a state function. One thing I forgot to mention on the tax side of things is those records are all public records. Um, so anyone could come in and say who lives at eleven-hundred Massachusetts. We could tell them. We could tell them their tax amount. Um, that's all public record. When we move over to motor vehicle, those are not public record. So, you can't call us and say, hey, who drives four-seven-five GKS? Well, we can't tell you that. Um, I know they've been parked in front of your house for the past two weeks, but we can't tell you. Uh, we can't give out any VIN information. We can't give out who the owners are, lien holder information. All of that is not public record. So, um, when we look at motor vehicle, it's very, I would say it's more strict than the tax side of things. Um, motor vehicle department's responsible for registering vehicles, collecting sales tax, property tax on motor vehicles, processing titles, and collecting antique foods. Um, so in that department, we have the treasurer, myself, the deputy. Um, we have a motor vehicle supervisors. We have three title approvers, and we have eleven processing clerks. So, when a clerk comes in, or I'm sorry, when a customer comes in with a title, um, they hand it to the frontline clerk. They process it, that title, and then goes to the back, um, what we call as a title approver. That title approver will approve the title, and then at that point, the state will generate a title and it'll be sent out to the customers. Um, we got a new system in two thousand and twelve. Prior to two thousand and twelve, that was not part of the process. The process was you processed it, the state, um, approved the title, and then the titles were mailed out. So, things have changed. Uh, we've taken on a greater workload since two thousand and twelve. Um, we've had to add three title approvers. We now have four title approvers, um, but three main ones. So, a little extra workload that we've had to take on since two thousand and twelve. One of the, uh, I guess, big talks about coming in to register your vehicle is how long do you wait? Um, we pulled numbers from twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-one. Um, so far, we have only two offices open, so we have our downtown office and our office on thirty-first and Iowa. Um, currently, our office on Sixth and Lawrence Avenue inside that Dillon store is closed. Um, there's only two people, space for two people. It's inside Dillon Store next to the pharmacy. Um, it's hard to social distance. It's hard to, to really manage two people in that office. So, currently, we have that closed. So, um, the service times, uh, for downtown, so we're looking at in two thousand and twenty-one, um, how long it takes for a transaction to get processed is roughly ten minutes, or roughly eleven minutes. Um, for our south office, it's ru- roughly eight minutes. Um, you know, in two thousand and twenty-one, they're waiting about twelve minutes. So, um, at our south office, it's roughly eight minutes. So, we're, we don't have long waits. Um, you know, you always hear horror stories of, um, downtown office had a line out the door. Well, you might have a line out the door, but we're getting through those customers, um, fairly quickly. You know, you're only waiting on average, um, twelve minutes. Yeah. Yeah, there are days where you're waiting thirty, forty-five minutes, but very, very rarely do we have customers wait over forty-five minutes to get helps in our office. So, um, moving on to transactions, um, I had to look at these numbers twice because I didn't necessarily believe them. Um, so if you look at the motor vehicle, um, total dollars collected, um, in twenty-nineteen, we collected twenty-seven-point-six million dollars, and in twenty-twenty, we collected twenty-seven-point-nine million dollars. So, we saw an increase. Um, we saw a decrease in the numbers of titles, um, processed, but we also saw the number of transactions increase. So, while there's this pandemic, while everything's going on, we've actually processed more transactions. Um, people still bought cars. People still renewed their vehicles. Um, so that, to me, that was surprising. Um, this past March, we saw a huge increase also. Um, and I, it was vehicles from those twenty-twenty timeframe, where they purchased them in twenty-twenty, never registered it. Um, most of them got, um, COVID check, basically, and they came in and renewed those vehicles or, or bought tags for those vehicles. So, in March, we saw a huge increase in, uh, in type, in processes or titles processed. Um, so that's kind of the motor vehicle and tax. Some of the challenges that we will have in the future for the motor vehicle department, um, I think is space. Um, currently, we're in, in the office, we have seven clerks that can, uh, be downtown, um, and that's what we're maxed out at. I don't know if you've ever been to the treasurer's office, but one of the spaces is not a normal-sized space. Um, it's a lot smaller than the others. So, to put someone there, um, it has an effect on them. They, you don't have the space to move. They can't put calculators. They can't put, um, paperwork, because they're all filled up with keyboards, scanners, and printers. Um, so I think space will be a big discussion in the next couple of years about, do we still need to be here downtown? Do we need to move out of downtown? Um, you know, the customers we see is basically anyone who drives a vehicle and anyone who owns a home. So, we have people come in for disabled placards, you know, think about them walking upstairs, parking in the parking lot and having to walk all the way around to the other side of the building to get into a treasurer's office, take the elevator. So, um, we do have a location on thirty-first and Iowa, um, so that is accessible for those, um, disabled parties. We do waive all those fees. Um, if, if we notice that, so it is something we do do. If we, we have someone who comes in and wants a disabled placard and renewes, we do waive some of those fees off. So, um, staffing could also be a challenge for us in the future. We have no space to add for staff right now. Um, you know, we're completely maxed out downtown. Have nowhere to add. Um, our south office is completely full. We have, you know, all the spaces filled. We do have the office on, on Sixth and Lawrence Avenue. Um, but currently, we have it closed. So, looking at different options of how we can, uh, utilize that space or what we can do with that space. So, that's all I have. Does anyone have questions for me?
I, I don't have a question, Adam. This is Commissioner Kelly, but hats off to your department for keeping those times low, but increasing the amount of transactions. I, that's, that's really exceptional. So, good work to you and your team.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bertio. I appreciate all of the information from these presentations today. This has been quite a bit, knowing that our county does quite a lot. Thank you all. We don't have additional questions. It does look like we are right at that five o'clock hour, so we will recess until our five-thirty business meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.